I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could you all just please stand for a quick moment? We're going to just take a moment of silence for the loss of the beautiful innocent children involved in the Prospect Street incident. Thank you. Superintendent?
Unfortunately, this is the kind of news that we do not like to share, you know, with the community. I think at this point here, I will read you a statement that we prepared. And it says, "The Brockton Public Schools Administration Faculty and Staff is shocked and saddened at the tragic and senseless loss on Monday of two innocent young lives. We grieve with their surviving family members and friends and offer our deepest condolences and prayers. School district crisis teams were assembled and were working with the affected school first thing this morning to offer support, grieve counseling, and any other assistance that may be needed for as long as needed for students and staff. Our Brockton Public Schools teachers and professionals are well-trained to support our students. We are always thankful for the support of the Brockton community, especially during times like this of loss." And I will tell you, as difficult as yesterday was, as this news started to become apparent to us, we worked with our principal over at the Angelo School, Marcia Andrade Serpa, and our excellent crisis management team, where counselors from all over the district were brought into the school on an as-needed basis. There was support for our teachers, our students. Our teachers were able to work with our students, as we said, even in our classrooms. Those are who our students trust. And while in the community, there are rumors and things going around, children hear these things. And they need to know that there are trusted adults in their homes and certainly in their classrooms that can work through some of their feelings. So again, we had outreach from some of the churches in the community. We've had outreaches from organizations that support certainly schools and children at times like this. But I want to thank Sharon Waldor, our Chief Officer of Student Support Services, and her team, and our principal, who made probably 30 phone calls today to classmates of this young student. So I want to thank everybody involved. This is a difficult time. And thank goodness, and I always say this, that I work for the Brockton Public Schools. We truly are a family. We're trained professionals. And unfortunately, there are times like these that we have to pull together and make sure we continue to support each other. So thank you to everybody.
Superintendent, thank you all for coming this evening. The mayor expressed his regrets. Something is developing right now where his presence is required, so it's my privilege to substitute for him. The second item on the agenda is the hearing of visitors. It's my understanding that no one has signed in, so we will move on to the third item, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is the bundling of regular school committee business for approval, and it is the opportunity for any of the school committee members to remove any particular item or items to speak a little more about in detail. Is there anything that any of the members would like to remove from the consent agenda this evening? No? Okay. I do see one item, a scholarship, so I think I will remove item F from the consent agenda. So could we have a motion to approve A, B, C, D, E, G, and H?
Approve items A, B, C, D, E, G, and H on the consent agenda?
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. I do see on the agenda a scholarship. And we always, in the Brockton Public Schools, like to give recognition to people who are making a generous donation to the schools. And listed as item F is the Walter R. Snarsky Memorial Scholarship. And it's a nice scholarship. It's $1,000. Eligibility is a candidate graduating from Brockton High School and accepted at an accredited four-year college or university who plans to pursue a career in the field of education. Scholarship is awarded on the basis of need and merit. Applications should be sent to Mr. Thomas Snarsky at 42 Hayward Street in Braintree, Massachusetts. So obviously, there's a tie to the Brockton community from the Snarsky family, so we certainly do appreciate that generosity. And this obviously will go into the student scholarship book. And this year, graduating students who are interested in the field of education can certainly apply for it and help out with their tuition bill. Mr. Gormly?
Mr. Snarsky was a teacher at Brockton. That's his connection.
Oh, great.
He was here when I was a student. I remember him.
Oh, wonderful.
Nice guy.
We have a little bit of information. As you said, Mr. Gormly, he actually graduated, like you did, from Brockton High School in 1954. And he went on to teach business for over 35 years. He did pass away this past December. The scholarship is set up by his son, Thomas, and he was a strong believer in students being able to continue their education, and the scholarship was set up for that very reason. And as you said, we're always so appreciative to people that think of our students and our school community.
Definitely. Okay. Anyone else? Can someone make a motion to approve item F on the consent agenda? Mr. Gormly, how about you?
Motion to approve item F on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Ms. Plant? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Wonderful. Okay. We move on to communication. Report of the superintendent. Madam Superintendent?
Good evening. I would like to start, as we always do, with our student report from our senior at Brockton High. She's counting the days. Ms. Sharma Erice.
That is very true.
Do you know what day it is, actually, till you graduate?
I'm just counting the months.
Oh, all right. Good, good. We're just in months.
Maybe in March, I'll start counting the days. But it's the start of a new semester, so we're halfway, we're at the halfway point. And last week, the nursing program had a graduation ceremony. It was kind of small, and it was during school hours, so some students couldn't attend. But I know some people who were graduating invited their parents and some teachers. And that is when nursing students, because there are nursing classes offered at Brockton High, they graduate after taking three years of nursing classes. And that allows them to take their CNA test, and then they can work as a CNA later on. So I know a lot of my friends who graduated from the nursing three program, and they plan on becoming nurses, so that's a very good step forward into their future. Science Fair was on Wednesday, and I know some, some of the students moved on to regionals. And I think it's broken up into categories from levels of what science class they're in and which grade they're in. So I was very happy to hear that some of my classmates moved on. And there was a painting competition, and I know some, some of my friends as well, they got keys. And a gold key means that your, your painting is seen as like a best, the best in the regional. And one of my friends got it, and I'm very proud of her for it. In terms of sports, the boys' basketball team is playing today. And the gymnastics competition is on Wednesday, as well as wrestling. And the swimming, the swimming team wrapped up their season with a win. So I'm very proud of them.
Big win.
Yep. Big three.
Well, Sharma, you bring up some really great things that have happened here at Brockton High. And I think we take for granted so many things every day, and we try to be up here, certainly as much as we can, to support. But the nursing ceremony was fantastic. And as I sat there with Dr. Murray again, and we watched these students who will again be, I'm going to guarantee, nurses in the community, supporting our local hospitals, our health care. It's very, very impressive to see what our kids are doing in high school before they've even gone on to college.
Yeah.
You know, you also mentioned the art awards. You'll be pleased that before the end of this evening, we're actually going to show some of those art awards for Brockton High School and North Middle School. And I know, Mr. Minicello, I'm going to turn it over to you. I know our basketball team continues to do extremely well, but our swimming team had a big-three championship, I believe.
The Brockton High School swim team, both the boys and the girls, won the big-three title last Tuesday. The big-three title is basically having the best record between, for the year, between Durfee, which is Fall River, New Bedford, and Brockton. Brockton has been very lean in winning that title for a number of years, I believe, over 10 years. So both the boys and the girls that evening won the title when they beat New Bedford. Then the fall, that same week, on Thursday, they gather down in New Bedford for the big-three championship, where all three teams compete at the same time. And once again, Brockton, boys and girls, won the big-three championship, which was huge. And it was really so cool to watch because it was interesting, last year, there was word that both teams would be combined and swim would be, events would take place the same night. So no one really knew how to take it. But the two teams really blended together, and they were so happy for each that they both won together. It was really just a really cool night. So something really nice to celebrate for both the boys and the girls. So they get duplicate, very large, huge, big trophies.
Yeah. They were pretty big.
Yeah. So that was really nice.
And I know we have a photo to share later when we have our photo gallery of that winning season. And also, I believe you want to invite them to come before our school committee, which we also like to see our student athletes, our student performers. It's exciting to see the work that you do to support right in front of us.
Yeah. So I believe we only have one meeting this month, so perhaps we can invite them to come in the first meeting in March, the first week of March. So that would be nice. And, you know, the other item that you touched upon, Sharma, was the nursing certificates, the nursing program. It's very coincidental that you mention that, because I was visiting a very good friend of mine who's undergoing rehab right now at a facility nearby here in, nearby Brockton. So I'm sitting there talking to him, and a nurse comes in. And I said to her, "Oh, where did you, you know, go to nursing school?" And she says, "Well, I just graduated from Brockton High last year. I have my CNA, and I'm going to UMass Boston." Well, you know, it's so nice to see the true application and, you know, benefit in, you know, in use, you know, basically put to good use in the medical profession firsthand. So I was so, you know, I was so proud of the young lady, and, you know, she was extremely competent, you know, just a wonderful, shining example of the education that the students get here at Brockton. And it really shows that that, that CNA program is the real deal, because she, you know, was taking all of his vital signs with, with the utmost of confidence. I was like, wow. I was expecting this person to say, "Oh, I'm, you know, I'm an RN, and I've been doing this for five years," or whatever. But she just graduated from Brockton High last year, and she was great. So it really shows that that is a program, like many here in the Brockton Public Schools, that has, is, has real relevance and real competency and professionalism, that these, these students, you know, are applying in the real world. It really was great to see. And you know who my friend is.
I do. Get well, Mickey.
Yep. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'd like to start tonight. One of the first presentations that we have is a presentation by coordinator Karen McCarthy. Karen is going to talk to us about Title II-A. Director Kelly Jones is going to talk to us about Title III. And Karen is also going to talk to us about Title IV, which is really new to us this year. So I'd like to invite them down. And if you recall, I want to go back to the conference that we attended in early December, and the conversation about the Title I, the Title II-A, the Title III, the Title IV funding is something that we cannot take for granted. I would have probably told you differently a couple of years ago. We're not feeling that way now. And the idea is, we've had Title I since 1965. And when you talk about, you know, just expecting those funds will be there for our students, we probably don't talk about it, don't show the support that goes on in the district for thousands of students, certainly in the Brockton Public Schools. So this is our way this year of continuing to show you the connections between Title I funding that you saw supporting our neediest learners. You're going to hear tonight about curriculum support, professional development and coaching. You're going to hear about our bilingual department, and you're going to hear about a social and emotional support for some of our students. So I know they have a PowerPoint presentation, and I'm going to let them take over.
My name is Karen McCarthy. And I've been in this position as the Title I coordinator for nine years. I also oversee Title II-A and Title IV, which, as the superintendent said, is new to our district this year. Title IV is for safe and supportive schools. It's very flexible about how the money can be spent. Title II-A and Title I, there is a lot of restrictions on how the money can be spent, but Title IV is much more flexible. Title IV, at the present time, is funding a coach at Brockton High School, and it also funds vocabulary, software program at all of the middle schools. The amount of the Title IV grant this year was $145,079. We are hoping to receive more funding for Title IV, but Title IV is one that the U.S. Department of Ed has not decided whether or not they will continue funding this grant for next year. Title II-A is only for improving teacher quality and for professional development. It cannot be used for any direct services to students. The Title II-A budget was $782,462 this year, and that's a cut of $442,498 from FY '17. And the reason we had such a huge cut this year is the federal government had a provision called "hold harmless." So we had always been held harmless, which meant that they can't cut a grant, a federal grant, more than 15%. But this year, "hold harmless" went away, so they cut a significant sum of money. Title II-A pays the salaries, health insurance, longevity, dental, sick leave buyback, MTRS, life, and per diem for the week before school begins for five associate principal positions, the Davis, the Alternatives, and Ashfield, South, and East, and West. Also, Title II-A, we are required to provide the private schools located within Brockton's borders money from the Title II-A grant for their own professional development of their teachers. And we have to look at the total enrollment of their students. They do not have to be Brockton students. In Title I, we provide services to the private schools, but those are only for Brockton students. For Title II-A, it is not. So Cardinal Spellman receives $26,334 for teacher training at their school. Brockton Day Nursery receives $1,890. And Brockton Seventh Day Adventist receives $2,688. And Trinity Catholic receives $15,830. Professional development we are providing is by Teachers 21, which is teaching, coaching, and the teaching and learning in line, which is training teachers on Reader's Workshop.
Sorry.
Okay. The Title II-A Associate Principals, Michelle Connors, will discuss what her job is in regard to that.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Connors, the Associate Principal at East Middle School. I've been in that role for three years. Over the three years, it's changed a bit, given the restructuring of curriculum support at the district level. In the past, associate principals were merely building-based and supported the teachers in terms of curriculum instruction and assessment. This year, we've taken on an additional role of district-wide support. We each have a content lead. For example, I'm the science content lead for the middle schools in Brockton. And each associate principal has taken on that responsibility, which you saw when we presented at the retreat, to you. We work together as a team to support district and school-based initiatives, supporting the teachers in the areas of curriculum instruction and assessment. At the district level, we continue the message that, let's say, the Eileen McQuaid, the ELA content lead, presented to the English teachers at an in-service. We follow up together. We ensure that the initiatives that are going on in that content area are carried out in our buildings, so that there's continuity across the district. At the school level, we work with teachers across all content areas to ensure, again, the continuation of district-wide initiatives, but also the school-based initiatives, as every school building may have a different focus based on the programs that are housed in their buildings. Each associate principal, as I mentioned, assumed a content lead, partners, partners, partners across the district, ensuring that our curriculum is aligned to the standards, that the assessments are implemented, that the data is analyzed, and that we are supporting the teaching and learning in the classrooms. All buildings have professional learning time, which takes on a variety of organized organizations. For example, we have grade-level meetings, content area meetings, and interdisciplinary meetings. We focus on the specific needs of each group. For example, at a grade-level meeting, we might be working with those teachers and targeted instruction necessary for grade six, where they're transitioning from elementary to middle school, versus working with the grade-eight content area teachers and working to transition students to grade nine when they move on to high school. Each associate principal is responsible for not only preparing the teachers for local and state assessments, but also training, training the teachers, working with the students and training the teachers. Specifically, this year, we're charged with the task of ensuring that all of our students are ready for the online assessments. Access was given online for grades six through eight for the first time this year in all middle schools. Some of the middle schools had done it previously. And MCAS will be online for grades six, seven, and eight. Last year, at most middle schools, it was only grade eight. This year, we've opted, all middle schools will do six through eight online testing.
So I'm Kelly Jones. I'm the Director of Bilingual Education here for Brockton. And Title III is a supplemental federal grant that emerged in the 1970s after the Lau versus Nichols Supreme Court case, and then the subsequent education legislation. The purpose is to improve the education of English learners to learn English, as well as meet the challenging state academic content standards and student academic achievement standards. The eligibility is that you have to have over 100 English learners to qualify for Title III funding. So we know Brockton has many more than 100 English learners. But between 2013 and 2017, the numbers of districts statewide that have over 100 English learners has increased by 21%. So in 2013, 86 districts received Title III funding, but in 2017, 104 districts received title funding. So our funding has actually decreased over the year. In 2013, we had a budget of $604,000, and now we're down to $559,223. It is determined, based on the October 1st Sims, that's in the previous year. So this year's money was, was on how much, how many students we had October in 2016 for the 2017 year. And, and one of the challenges is that we, we, new students arrive every year. So for the October 1 enrollment, my records show we have 3,969 students, which was about 23.3% of the total student population. But on February, January 24th, our enrollment was 4,147. That's an increase of 178 students in only three months. We will not receive any, any support on those additional students. We'll support them, but we won't receive funding based on, on those students. The grant is supplemental. It cannot be utilized for any required academic or language instruction. So it cannot fund ESL teachers, or content teachers, or adminis, administrators, or curriculum development, or core instructional materials. It can't supplant what is the requirements of the district. And this budget pays the salaries, MTRS, and health for four English language acquisition coaches and one English language assessment specialist. So there are three Title III priorities that we have to address through our Title III grant application. The one is, one is effective language instruction. So we have to support the effective language instruction in the classrooms and for the district to meet both English language proficiency and student academic achievement. We have to provide professional development to improve the instruction and assessment of English learners and to enhance the ability of teachers and school leaders. And we have to provide activities that will engage the community and the parents in the education of their, their children. So it's family, parent, and community engagement activities. So I have Jen Hunter. She is one of our four English language acquisition coaches, and she's going to talk a little bit about what she does to support teachers, schools, and families.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jennifer Hunter, and I'm an English language acquisition coach at the Angelo, the Baker, the Brookfield, and the Downey. And tonight, I'm going to be speaking on behalf of myself, not only myself, but also my colleagues. And we, as English language acquisition coaches, we serve multiple schools. And within those schools, we also serve multiple programs, such as Juntos, which is the two-way, Unidos, the Portuguese Dual Immersion, excuse me, program, and also the Amite, which is the new French-English, the French immersion program. Our role covers many areas, various initiatives based on our buildings, but most of our time is spent supporting teachers, supporting schools, and providing professional development to our teachers and staff, as well as providing parent engagement. When we support our teachers, our main priority is really to improve student learning. And in doing so, we conference, and we plan with our teachers, we model research-based strategies, and we provide resources and insight. We spend time analyzing data in order to effectively plan and guide and differentiate instruction. And we provide group coaching to our SEI teachers, where we pull them all together and we collaborate, and we learn about different strategies based on the four language domains, which are speaking, listening, reading, and writing. And in addition to that, we also provide professional development to our ESL teachers, English as a Second Language teachers. And right now, we're working with, with them on level literacy. When we support our schools, we collaborate with administrators and instructional coaches in the buildings. And we support district initiatives. Right now, we're working on Reader's Workshop, and we're actually looking at what that means and what that looks like in our SEI classrooms. We hold language assessment team meetings, also known as our LATs. And throughout the year, we're conducting emergency LATs based on the data and teacher recommendation and classroom performance. It might, it might show that the student might need a different placement at the time. And we also hold spring LAT meetings. During those times, we make individual placements for the following school year based on achievement and data. We lead and participate a variety of committees and projects. We find it beneficial also to be very flexible. As in today, I was at the Angelo, and my day today looked a little bit different than it usually does at the Angelo, but tomorrow, I'll be back to be meeting with teachers and also team meetings with, based on student data. As for parent engagement, we offer support to our bilingual advisory council. We provide information and program services based on students, for students. We assist in the delivery of Title III parent engagement activities, where we look at parent workshops based on what students need for learning, the rights of parents, immigration laws. And we, we also support families in cultural pride, such as, as an example, for game nights and also Haitian Pride Day is another one. Sorry, I was very nervous. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I know that we have a lot of acronyms, but I'd be happy to explain those in further detail.
Well, Jen, you did an excellent job being nervous. I think the committee can certainly see the importance of all of our, you had the presentation previously on Title I support for our schools, Title II-A, with, again, putting structures in place to support our instruction at the middle school level for all of our middle schools, looking at our bilingual program, a very strong program recognized throughout the state, and a model that we continue to, to look to support students who come in, you know, many times not having any handle on the English language, and getting them to the point, again, when they're graduating from Brockton High School, getting scholarships to very prestigious colleges and going on to being very successful. So it takes a lot of hard work, again, something that I think Brockton has done extremely well. I would hope, again, this is your opportunity, and like Jen said, I know there are a lot of acronyms or terms that we use, but I want to also say, when you, when you think about our bilingual PAC, such a strong support, again, everything from funding to making sure that our children are, have extracurricular activities, are able to perform well in school and out of school, and want very much for, you know, their children to be successful. So I'm always certainly excited to go to those meetings and seeing the parent involvement. With Title I, you know, we've done the, I'm going to call it book clubs, but that's not what it is.
Bingo for books.
Bingo for books. I've, I've gone to those meetings with parents, and again, parents come out and want to know how to support their kids, and this funding has always allowed us to make those very strong connections with home.
In a typical day, how much time do you spend with teachers? And how, how do you work that in their schedule? I mean, it's obvious from, you know, your presentation and reviewing this, that a large part of your position is to support the teachers, you know? But I'm just wondering how, in, in a typical day, that takes place.
It does depend on the day, and it depends on what the needs are for the building at that time. Based on a day-to-day, it could be several hours, depending on the initiatives that we're focusing on. Reader's Workshop, sometimes, the beginning of the school year, I was sitting with teachers, like, almost hours on a time to figure out their schedule for their ELA block. But sometimes on a day-to-day, I might just go into a classroom, check in with a teacher, see if there's needs, and then move on.
So does the teacher or teachers have an opportunity to approach you and say, hey, I, I could use a little advice, or a little support, or, you know, with X, Y, or Z? How does that work?
So they always have my email, even if I'm not in the building at that time. I'm at the Angelo Monday and Tuesday, and then I alternate schools, Baker and Brookfield, and then I'm on call at the Downey. However, we know that, as coaches, we are basically always available, so there's times that I'm talking to teachers until 7 o'clock at night. So it just depends on the day and what the needs are.
I'd like to add that we have, in the bilingual department, a very strong collegial relationship among the teachers and between the coaches and the teachers. You can see my teachers are up there supporting Jen tonight, and, and they are, they are always there to utilize the resources that are available to them, whether it be Jen, their English language acquisition coach, or their literacy coach, or their STEM coach. They're very eager to utilize the resources to help make their instruction the best it can be for the students.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Sullivan?
I had a Title II-A question.
Oh, wonderful.
Actually, two of them.
Uh-oh. Watch out.
On the, I was looking at the cut, that $400,000 cut?
Yes, $442,000.
What, where'd that come from? How'd that?
Well, what happened was, we used to have a, an associate principal at every single one of the middle schools. So what we had to do was share associate principals at the middle schools, which isn't as effective as it always was. And we also had additional funding for more professional development for teachers, so we had to cut that also.
Coordinators?
Coordinators, yeah. And the coordinators were, two coordinators for ELA and for science and math, we also had to cut those positions.
And the other question was the, the private schools' allocations?
Yes.
Is that a percentage of what you get?
Well, how the private school, how that's figured, Title II-A money is based on how much you receive in Title I money. So that's how the federal government allocates the funding. And then for the private schools, by law, we're required to count the number of children that they have in the private schools. So in the Brockton, in, in Brockton, we have 1,226 students who attend private schools. And then we do a calculation, how much money are we spending on professional development out of the Title II-A grant and all of its professional development? So we're spending, we have to spend $44 per student in the private schools. So it's a calculation, and then it's based on how many students are attending that school. So that's why Cardinal Spellman receives the most, Trinity Catholic receives second, Brockton Seventh-day Adventist only has about 80 students, and Brockton Day Nursery only has a kindergarten. So it's based that way.
When you say Brockton students, what do you, they live in Brockton? They go there?
No. They don't have to live in Brockton for Title II-A. For Title I funding, the students must live in the city of Brockton and be in an attendance zone for a Title I school. All of our elementary schools are Title I school-wide schools, so all of the students who attend Trinity Catholic in pre-K to five are eligible for Title I funding. So at Trinity Catholic, we provide a full-time teacher there, because that's how much money they generate. At Seventh-day Adventist, we have two tutors, because they don't generate enough funding for anything more. And at St. Bridgetts in Abington, we have one tutor part-time, because Brockton students who would attend one of our elementary schools, and it's a Title I school, or is eligible for funding, even though they go to school in Abington.
Thank you.
So the money follows the student from Brockton?
Yeah.
And as Karen said, when you talk about Cardinal Spellman under Title II-A, just to use that as an example, when that allotment is given, what is it, about $26,000?
Yes.
They can use that. It's not just for the Brockton students that attend Cardinal Spellman. They are allowed to use that to do professional development with their teachers, which obviously affect all their students. And I want to thank Karen, because, you know, in working collaboratively with these schools, I know you've developed very strong relationships, very trusting relationships, and I want to thank you for, for reaching out and doing that.
Thank you. And there's a change. We used to be able to do set-asides with the federal grants, but now we have to allocate funding to the private schools from the top of the grant. We used to be able to do set-asides for our school system, and then calculate the funding to the private schools based on, after the set-asides, but now we have to take it from the top of the grant. So the private schools are receiving significantly more funding now than they had in previous years.
And if you recall, last year, when we were dealing with the $16 million deficit, lo and behold, we were waiting usually around June 30th, we start to see the figures from the federal government. Never did we expect, under Title II-A funding, that we would receive a $400,000-plus cut. And in fact, I can remember being away at a conference and getting the Title, Title I, Title II-A figures in, and again, it was back to the drawing board, and again, realizing what we had to do to be able to use this money effectively. And as Karen has said, we've had to share associate principals. We just use some local funds to bring an associate principal for the rest of this year on an interim basis over at North. It's a job that, and you know during the retreat, we spoke about it, you know, an associate principal is needed, especially in your larger schools with 700 and 800 students in a middle school. So again, it has really affected us in a negative way, and we continue to reach out to our federal representative, Lynch. You've got your senators, Markey, and Senator Warren, and again, I know there is efforts to, to really keep an eye on that funding, which is why we're going to continue to talk about it. We're going to make sure our parents are starting to write letters and secure that funding for our students. And I think they want to catch us when we're not looking, because again, we haven't had to do this for years. That funding was always there, so.
And it's really important to encourage people to take the census in 2020, because Title I funding is based on census. Many people think it's based on free and reduced lunch numbers. It's not. It's based on the census. So Title I money for FY '19 is based on the FY '15 census. And Brockton, we just got a notification, we'll get the true figures in June, but we were at 23-point-something percent poverty, and now we're at 20% poverty. So they're just giving us kind of a heads-up that we might get a cut in Title I funding because our census poverty rates are lower on the census. Hopefully not. Hopefully that will change in June, but it's important to understand that distinction.
And of course, you know, as a community, we would want to say, this is great. You know, people are getting jobs, you know, people are working, and our poverty level is, is lower. But in fact, we know that that's not exactly the true story. There are people that are worried about filling out a census. We have great efforts in a place like Brockton to convince people that this is something that does not necessarily put them on the map if they're, again, immigrants who are here and, you know, do not have the proper documentation. So we, again, the children are in our schools. We welcome everybody in our schools. So this is something that becomes another hurdle for a district like Brockton.
Lisa?
Thank you. This change that you spoke of in the allocation of the Title II-A funding, where you said now more is going into the private schools, when did this change occur and, and why?
This year. Well, I'm just going to speculate, but the Archdiocese was very active in making sure that they receive all the funding that is available to them. In previous years, the federal government allowed districts to do set-asides, but the Archdiocese has really fought that, and they basically were able to change that rule so that all of the money comes from the top of the grant.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I also want to thank the school committee. Many times, I talk about the hours and hours that you put in in subcommittee meetings. One of your recent subcommittee meetings was a Saturday. It was a retreat. You spent, I told you, four hours. I know we went a little bit over that. And again, I thought it was very worthwhile. I just want to capture a couple of things from the retreat. We had Dr. Kancel talk about accountability. We had a presentation by June Saber-Maguire and her team of curriculum administrators from the elementary, from the middle, and the high school level. There was certainly a lot of conversation about looking at the new MCAS 2.0, what the action plans would be for every one of the levels. You talked about a goal for the superintendent in making sure these action plans and timelines are adhered to. We spent probably over two hours looking at the direction of the curriculum in the district. So another thing that I'd like to do, we did not have time for, and I'm going to ask Dr. Julian Andrade to, to come up and actually go over a little bit about our preschool expansion task force. And I do want to publicly be able to talk about the locations as we start to finish up our kindergarten registration in the next couple of months. We will be coming up with a plan, and we'll be ready to share with the community, especially, again, I will mention, those youngsters born in November and December who have missed the cutoff for kindergarten will be our priorities for preschool. So Julian?
Good evening. It's nice to see you all tonight. It was about, a little bit more than a year ago, that June Saber-Maguire and I met with you to talk about our concerns with the kindergarten entry date. I can't believe that time has passed so quickly. So I'm here to give you an update on how we've moved forward during that time.
You're doing a PowerPoint, correct?
Yep. I don't see it. No. I'm not going to talk to you about Title IV. Karen did a great job on that. So I'm here to give you a brief update, just on what we've been working on. So it's not only about the kindergarten entry date, it's also our work at thinking of expanding the preschool in order to offer an experience to children that will not get the full-time experience this year because of their age. So our work, as this is the beginning of the presentation we showed in January, our vision and our mission is always up front for us, to pursue excellence in our instruction, especially what's near and dear to my heart is our strategic initiative on every child is able to read by grade level, by grade three. So this initiative of moving back the kindergarten date certainly serves that purpose, as we'll have kids that are both emotionally and academically ready for those challenges when they come into kindergarten by age five. So we briefly talked about this before. The cognitive and social and academic, and even physical demands of a kindergartner is not appropriate for four-year-olds, and what we're asking to do in kindergarten right now. It's really for children that are age five and above. And I went over along with June, remember, we looked at the standards and what they were asking five-year-olds to do, we were asking four-year-olds to do when they came in, and how challenging it was for them at that time. Massachusetts curriculum frameworks that we use here in our state talk that the kindergarten or pre-K is really for children whose age group is older four-year-olds and younger five-year-olds. So right there, that's very compelling. That's right in our state standards, and that's in alignment with our guidelines for preschool learning experiences as well. So I think this is very interesting. This is where our BRRR babies fall, the numbers. These, I just got these from Dr. DeBarros. And it's only three different from this time last year. This time last year, we had 408 students, so you can see that our numbers in kindergarten are, are stabilizing. So in September, the entry, we had 110. In October, 102. November, we have 110 students in December of '88. So there's a total of 411 BRRR babies this year. Those are students, again, who have birthdays from September to December. And here's our action plan, and this is some of the steps we've taken forward since we last presented to you. So these are our multi-year approach. Once we had presented to you and a decision was made to roll back that kindergarten date, we, the decision was made to do it in a couple of years. So this year, we're really looking at it as a planning phase, and we've established an early childhood task force that's met several times, and to develop a communication, transportation, and budget plan, which we're still working on right now. So for this next fall, fall of 2018, the, the entrance age changes to November 1st, so all children entering kindergarten have to be five before November 1st of this year. And then, for those children, if we go back here to, to this slide, those children that were born in November, December, will have preschool opportunities the following year. So our hope is to open four pre-K classrooms in the fall, and it'll be a total of eight half-day sessions, so it's half-day pre-K. And that would be for five days a week, Monday through Friday. The following year, we'll roll back the date till September 1st. So all kindergarten students entering will be five by September 1st. And you can see how much more that's in alignment with our curriculum. And then we would add another additional four pre-K classrooms, which would give us a total of 16 half-day sessions. So next year, four, following year, four after that. And this is some of the things that we've been doing with the action plan since we last met. We, we received your approval, and I have to tell you, there was so much happiness across the district with teachers that have been speaking to me for years and years about changing the elementary date for kindergarten coming in, because they thought it would be so much more appropriate for their students. So we've tried very hard to share this information in multiple So we've tried very hard to share this information in multiple ways with the community, and we've sent out parent letters. Those were distributed during conferences in multiple languages. I've worked with Michelle Bolton, and we've been getting this out on our website and social media. We had a billboard and flyers printed, and then there was a mass emailing by Joni Block to many of the childcare systems, the YMCA, WIC, Early Intervention. And then I worked with the nursing staff, and we sent out letters to area pediatricians and asked them to post that, so when they come in with families, that they have that information available to them. June and I have been responding to parent phone calls, and I'll tell you, once I'm able to offer the idea that we have preschool available, they're very happy with that opportunity. And then we have, we're working on letters to those eligible students for preschool, to their parents. We have upcoming kindergarten showcases and registration. Michelle Bolton and I will be appearing on School Scene sometime this month, talking about the kindergarten entry age and also with the pre-K opening. And we're going to have a pre-K showcase then, we're hoping in April, to have two that month for parents. So we're thinking that the high end of that would be about 200 families that would be eligible for preschool. So things that we've done, we established, June and I established an early childhood task force, which Lisa Plantin is part of. We have representation from school and the community, from the Y, from Head Start. We've tried, we have kindergarten teachers, CFC managers, so we've really tried to have a large group of people come together to help us with our decisions as we move forward. And things that we still need to work on and develop long-range plans around are facilities, transportation, and budget. So for those four classrooms I mentioned before, they're eight half-day sessions, and we're hoping that existing teachers may fill those preschool positions if they have the appropriate certification, because some of those kids will be coming out of kindergarten classes, and it would open up those preschool opportunities. The Arnon and Downey schools, the principals have, I know that June's been talking to the principals, and those are the two sites for next year for the preschool classrooms. Two will be at the Arnon, two will be at the Downey. Where, there is no transportation at this time for preschool provided by the district. It would be parental or private transportation, and we're hoping to meet with some of the local childcare centers to see if we can do some wraparound for transportation. So if the child goes to a morning session, that maybe they can get transportation to daycare in the afternoon. Oh, and that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We're very excited about this movement, and we've taken, you know, great thought about, you know, communicating this to the public as often as we can. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Just talking about the start date thing. So it says on here, November 1st. I thought you had said October 31st, so when does, so if a child's date of birth is November 1st, they can go, or is it October 31st?
The way the language is stated is they need to be five by November 1st.
All right, so a child born November 1 would be eligible if they were five on November 1?
Yes.
All right.
And the same thing with September 1st.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, we have had parents call and say, you know, my child's birthday is November 26th, or, you know, November 16th, and I know that Mrs. Smith has also had that with some communications with parents as well. And as soon as we're able to explain developmentally appropriate curriculum, the types of things we're asking them, and then saying, we're trying very hard to give you a preschool opportunity as well that's free to you, most people are very reasonable about that. And then I say to them too, you know, our plan is even to move it farther back to September. So if this were the following year, you know, it wouldn't be that close cutoff for you.
You know, as Dr. Andrade says, this is obviously a topic of conversation. Parents wait forever, excited for so many reasons. You know, we have some students that, and if we were to sit here and talk about our own children, you know, we feel that they're ready to attend kindergarten, you've spent time with them, maybe they're starting to be developing readers. You know, the truth is, when you look at the standards, you know, there are many things that make up what a child that's spending a full day in kindergarten has to do. You know, some of it is developmental. It's a long day, there's a lot expected of them, so we are not just looking at the success, although we're very excited about giving them a preschool experience. You know, giving children an opportunity for a half-day to learn how to share, you know, how to take part in so many project-based activities that little children do. But also looking at, and we keep talking about this, when they leave in fifth grade and they enter that middle school, a lot more is expected. And if you are started as a very young five-year-old, you're going to be at that point a very young 10-year-old. And what does it mean, more importantly, again, you look at Brockton High, 4,300 students, a lot more is expected of you independently, and are you going to be that 13-year-old starting? Or will you be that 14-year-old that, again, we feel developmentally gives you a better chance for success? And there's research out there to prove that. So we are holding very tight to the dates. The dates were dates we approved, that's what's happening now for registration. We are very happy to speak to parents. I want to thank Dr. Andrade, June Saber McGuire, their entire staff, I know, and again, when we're out there publicly, and I anticipate, you know, you will get a lot of phone calls about it, but again, we are going with the dates that we have voted on and that we think are researched and better prepare our students. And the one thing that I know, Mr. Minichello, you and I have talked about this, is out of 356 districts in the state, there are three off four that have a December 31st cutoff date. One of them was Worcester, I know they're looking to change it, just as Brockton is. A couple were rural areas, and I can't speak to what they offer in kindergarten, if it's a half-day, et cetera. But I can speak to the majority of the research out there and the majority of districts in our own state of Massachusetts.
Well, I just want to say that, you know, I firmly believe we did our due diligence, and we're making the right choice on this. I think a lot of us have felt like this has been on, you know, something that's almost really overdue, that this cutoff date is being changed. But we do respect that it is something that our parents have come to expect, that December 31st cutoff date, and we know they want to be very, you know, sensitive to their needs in notifying them of this. So now, I know it says we have the flyers and the billboards. Will this be up, say, at Brockton High? And if so, when can we expect to really see a good advertisement of the, not just the registration, but the, you know, very well-advertised change in date, to make sure all of our parents are aware of the change?
Yep, yep. And I continue to work with Michelle Bolton in the way to get it out in our social media as much as possible. We had a big blitz during the fall parent-teacher conferences, and we'll continue to keep working on that. We had billboards. I mean, we're just trying to get it out every way possible, so no one is taken by surprise for this, and that we can support them as they transition either to kindergarten or into preschool.
Thank you very much.
I was wondering, you know, I have heard from a constituent already about this, and again, I get the cost of daycare, I pay it too. It's part of my family's household expenses, so I completely understand that, you know. But like Ms. Planton, I think all of us agree, when we looked at the curriculum side of it, it was the right thing to do for the kids. Is there some, we, when we looked at this, had kind of a side-by-side comparison of the curriculum. Is there some, is that, could you resend that, and is that something that we could share with, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm looking for something that, you know, when we get that call from a constituent, we could send to them and say, here, see it for yourself. This is what your four-year-old's going to be asked to do when it's not appropriate, you know? I just think that maybe, I mean, maybe not for everybody, but for a lot of folks, it might be helpful for them to see that and say, oh geez, I kind of see why you did what you did here, you know? So.
I'd be happy to send you that previous presentation.
That way we have that, I mean, yeah.
That's a nice comparison of what, you know, we're asking four-year-olds to post to five-year-olds.
That, it was so helpful, I know, for me, looking at that when we were weighing this decision.
I'd be happy to share that with you, and please feel free to share that information with parents as well.
To elaborate on that, maybe that's something we can even put up on our site. Think that's a wonderful idea right now.
That's a great idea.
When you're, you know, wherever you're going to put change in date and show them what's expected.
I can work with Michelle on that and June as well.
Thank you. Good idea.
I have those once in a while.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just to finish up on some retreat information, you had requested, I know it was put in your packet, you had requested after looking at the two-hour presentation on the curriculum, on the action plan, et cetera, that one of the superintendent's goals be added. So we did add District Improvement Goal Forward, Develop Intentional Structures for Vertical and Horizontal Articulation That Lead to Alignment of Teaching and Learning Between All Schools, Levels, and Content Areas, Achieving the Goal of Becoming an Effective District-wide Professional Learning Community Which Fosters Strong Academic Achievement for All Students. So that is the additional goal that I added. I know the goals you have in front of you from the retreat, so hopefully we can vote on those goals, so the superintendent can move forward with the goals for this coming year.
Vote on those goals now?
I'm not sure if you're ready to, but if not, this meeting's certainly the next one.
Yeah, okay. Why don't we review these goals and be prepared for the next meeting in March to either amend or adopt the contents, okay?
Thank you very much. And before I bring up a presentation by, they can start to get ready, Michelle Bolton, our Communications Director, and Seamus Clifford, our Content Web Manager, they're going to talk to you about something exciting going on, which is Brockton's involvement in our Leading the Nation campaign, which is the state's rolling out the 25th anniversary of the McDuffie case, and all that has gone with that in the 25 years of supporting education in our state. So in talking about Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, last time I was here, we talked about the commissioner interviews that I had attended. We do have a new commissioner, so I'm pleased to tell you, I'm sure you all know, that the new commissioner is Jeffrey Riley, who is the receiver superintendent presently in Lawrence. I've worked with Jeff for a long time, and I'm very excited to have him come on and really lead the work that Mitchell Chester had led so well for so long. So very pleased to make that announcement. And also, another comment, that we did have our parent forum on the District Code of Conduct on January 24th. I know the summary was, I believe, presented in your packet. I will have Sharon Wolder at a later date come and talk to us about the results of that parent forum. We would have loved more parents to come, and we'll continue to do outreach and make sure, and I know a number of you were there, but make sure that we start to get the parents' voices in so many areas as we look to, and I don't want to say simplify our code of conduct, but making sure we have community support and something that is easily accessible, and parents can follow and understand certainly the rules in our school. So. So Mr. Minichello was asking me for the start date. Jeffrey Riley will probably, there isn't a definitive start date, it probably will be around, I think, July 1st. He'll finish up his time in the Lawrence Public Schools. I'm sure he'll be transitioning in a, for quite a while. Okay, so again, Leading the Nation is exciting, and we've got a lot going on, and Michelle and Seamus will explain to us.
It is, it's very exciting. Good evening, everybody. I'm Michelle Bolton, as you know, and I'm glad to be back with Seamus Clifford, our Web Content Manager, and we've been working for the past couple of months to prepare to present to you this initiative that the state is getting ready to launch called Leading the Nation, and it's going to be a spring of some exciting events that are statewide. Every district is going to be participating. And the reason is twofold. It is the 25th anniversary of Ed Reform, but also after doing some surveys and other kinds of focus groups, the state realized that most people in the state don't realize that we are number one in the nation. And you can see from some of the pie charts that most people don't realize that we lead the nation in some stats, including our four-year graduation rate has increased over the last 10 years, while the dropout rate has decreased, that we have a strong teacher workforce, a shared commitment to supporting students, number one in the world in reading on the PISA International Assessment, number one in advanced placement success in the country in 2017, number one in the U.S. in reading and math on the nation's report card, and on and on. And after having discussions among themselves, folks at DESI decided that we needed to do something about it, and so they've designed a celebration that is going to begin. It's essentially beginning now with a media campaign. It's going to lead up to a day at the State House on April 5th, where there will be a celebration, mostly with elected officials, but we're going to have a week-long event from May 7th to 11th, which coincides with National Teacher Appreciation Week. And districts have the option to hold any kind of events that we would like, which celebrate what sets us apart, how we lead the nation. And we can have press conferences, we can have events, we can communicate, bring in the community, we can do any kind of events that we would like, that for Brockton can show what sets Brockton apart, really highlight our achievement in any way, celebrate our teachers. In order to lead up to this event, we've had to prepare ourselves in a couple of ways. We've had to send in photos that show our students in the classroom, faces of Leading the Nation, and DESI will be choosing photos that will be the, that'll be the face of the campaign, so we're really hoping that some of our students are going to be chosen. We're in the process of making a 60-second video that's going to be in competition for one of three that will be shown at the State House on April 5th. We're filming that today. We have just created a webpage that we'll be showing you in a minute, that's going to be the focus of our campaign. And part of that is a newsletter that we're about to launch, that will be informing parents of everything that's going on. People can sign up electronically, and when the campaign is over, the newsletter will continue, and so we'll be able to keep parents informed of everything that's going on in the district, something that we've wanted to do for quite some time. We'll be taking a lot of district selfies, which we've already got a few up there that Seamus will be showing you in a couple of minutes. We've sent out a note to principals asking what events we already have going on during that week, so some of them we can repurpose for our Leading the Nation events, and then we're going to set up a committee and decide whether events we can schedule with the community. So we've already got the Faculty Art Show scheduled, and also the Spring Musical, which are great events in the Brockton Public Schools, and really show already something with our students and our faculty, you know, that really shows who we are. And we're looking forward to filling that in with other events. So we'll have a lot more to update you on in the next coming weeks, but I'd like to toss it over to Seamus, who can show you the site that we've already set up on our website.
Thank you all for having me again. Thanks, Michelle. Pretty much nailed it. Good summary. I'm just going to show you the site we've developed so far. If you go to the public website under Parents and Community, you just, the first link here, Leading the Nation. And if you click here, this big logo for Leading the Nation, it brings you to the DESI I did go through all this, and I did see a couple of Brockton students scattered throughout. Yeah, there's just a brief quote telling you about Leading the Nation, a little explanation, a lot of what Michelle just said about why we're leading the nation, Massachusetts as a whole. And then you can sign up for our newsletter. If we scroll back up to the top, we can see that there's our upcoming events. We have two big headlining events so far. It's the Faculty Art Show, which is May 7th through the 31st, and then there is the Spring Musical, which will show, I think it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday of that week. We have a center over here for the State House Celebration. Once the video is completed, we'll throw that up here, and you can all see it. We have our Leading the Nation Week Center. This will expand once we repurpose some more events to put on it during the week. And my favorite page is the selfie page. We have a few selfies so far. Of course, our soccer team winning the state championship. There's this girl, Angela, she was spectacular. I got to watch her at the Science Fair, and she was doing amazing work. I didn't even know what she was talking about. And then I just saw her name again. She won one of those Golden Key Art Awards, so she's got science, she's got art, she's incredible. And some all-scholaristic pictures, Brian Scalabrini, and our DECA competition, and we're always looking for more selfies to add up here. So if you guys have any ideas or thoughts or questions?
That's good. One major thing for the week that I forgot to mention was, we did hear from DESI that there's going to be a press tour that the governor is going to be doing during the week, starting in the western part of the state, middle, our part, and probably down the Cape. And he is planning on making a stop in Brockton. And when he does, he wants some staff and students to hop on the bus and drive around to a couple of towns with him. So we'll be, we'll be seeing if that occurs, and if it does, we'll want some folks to be part of that. And also, we were asked if we could have some students perform at the April 5th celebration at the State House. So we'll be in discussions to see who we might like to do that as well. So it's, it's really a giant PR campaign to celebrate us as well as other districts in the state, so it's a great opportunity to show people who we are and what we've got.
That we do that you could kind of campaign is Dr. Seuss's birthday, which is my favorite day of the whole year, when we go into the schools and we read to the students and all the great events that we have everywhere. Maybe that's an event you might want to consider kind of showcasing in this as well.
Yep, that's, sounds awesome. Anyone else? Any questions? So Mr. Minichello is pointing out, and I'm sure everybody saw Jay Stewart's name up there. So Jay Stewart, former city counselor, counselor-at-large for the city of Brockton, has worked for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education probably for about five, six years now. And he's always a great partner, always likes to highlight Brockton. And so, and most importantly, when you again, talk about the 25 years and the McDuffie case, I do think that Brockton will be front and center with the kickoff. I know, as Michelle said, we're keeping it under wraps, but we've had a lot of fun with producing a video and we want to win. So we're hoping that, you know, we get an opportunity to showcase the great work, the great achievement in Brockton, what happens in our classrooms every day so that they can lead the nation. So it'll be exciting and we'll keep you updated. We're going to be working with the classrooms and every school will take part in the Leading the Nation.
Pointed that out, Madam Superintendent, that, you know, the work that's done in our classrooms every day so that they can talk about Leading the Nation, and with our new commissioner coming on and the district that he's coming from, I'm hoping maybe with that will come a change in the attitude towards, you know, proper funding of urban education from DESI. You know, I mean, he's a receiver in an urban district. Hopefully, he gets, you know, what's really going on and will bring some common sense to what they're doing so that we can continue to lead the nation. And while I'm at it, I do want to compliment you guys on the great work that you're doing on here. I don't want to take away from that with kind of talking about, you know, the whole funding situation, but, so I do appreciate you showing us this and putting it together. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's a great lead in, a great lead in, Mr. D'Agostino, because one of the things when you talk about properly funding and whether our new commissioner coming on board gets it, I'm sure he gets it. He and I have had conversations and I've shared with you about funding. But we did have an event. The weather didn't cooperate as much as we would have liked, but it was an event that we've been planning for a long time. This past Friday, I know a couple of you were able to steal away from work. Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Minichello were able to come to Stonehill College where we hosted a first discussion on equity in education and just what that means. We were very fortunate to have Paul Revel there, former Secretary of Education, very much involved with the ed reform movement back in the 90s, gave us a historical perspective on certainly, you know, what happened at that time, the so-called Graham bargain, why businesses were on board, and why the time was right as the case was going through the courts. And let's remember, the case started in 1980 with a young girl named Robin Webby. We talk about the McDuffie case, but it had started, what, 12, 13 years before that? And every bit, the state was able to do something else and the court didn't rule on it. And finally, in 1993, the court was ruling in favor of the equity in education. It didn't matter about your zip code, that you should get an equitable education no matter where you live. So we feel we're at a tipping point right now. There was a lot of talk about building coalitions. We had Superintendent Mary Bork from Chelsea also talk about her role on the Foundation Budget Review Commission, the recommendations that were made over three years ago now, and how slowly the legislature has been in putting forward, and again, it wasn't all of the recommendations, there were many recommendations that came out of that Budget Review Commission. So I thought it was an excellent day. We went from nine o'clock until close to noon time. I see Kim Gibson here this evening. She was with us. This will be, and when you hear me say coalitions, it's coalitions with the MTA, it's coalitions with the AFT that represent the majority of our teachers in our state. It's coalitions with nonprofits looking to find a number of attorneys that are willing to kind of marshal this case forward. It is going to take hours of research. It's going to take really much time and effort in putting together a case, but at least the discussion happened. The mayor welcomed the group. There was just a lot of very, very good discussion as we continue to move forward. So we will continue to update you. I have a follow-up phone call this week, as a matter of fact, to really talk about what next steps are from the conversations that happened on Friday.
When you're talking about building coalitions, and I know that you've had discussions with other urban districts, but we just saw on the news the other night, the Everett Public Schools, which lost funding and are talking about how many layoffs they're going to have to do, which goes to show that even though we know we have many allies in the lower-income urban districts, other districts have been affected as well. Are we, is that somebody that you would perhaps reach out to?
Oh yeah. You know, when you hear me talk about last February, when we went to Speaker of the House Leo's office, Everett was one of our partners that day. So you had Everett there, you had Revere, you had Chelsea, you had Brockton, you know, that was an audience with, again, the Speaker of the House. So they are standing right beside us. You know, they're dealing with a lot of the same things. You heard them talk last night about the economically disadvantaged. So they're dealing with a lot of the same things. Every city is different, every town is different, the funding formula is different, the student population is different, but what is very clear to us is the funding is not equitable. It isn't equitable when we had to lay off, again, 80 teachers, additional support staff members. And I want to remind everybody that we, although we're very proud of all the wonderful things that we continue to see going on in our schools, it defies logic that we are even able to open those doors this past September. And this is not the way to run and dismantle a school system. So you hear us talk tonight about, you know, Title I, Title II, A, losing money again. That was not state funding, that was federal funding. But all of this is making a difference with kids, and you had Shama here earlier this evening. She's here every one of our school committee meetings. And that's the reason we're advocating for what we are, to make sure that Shama, when they're starting at four and five years old, has an opportunity to have technology in their classes, a world-class education, a 21st century education, making sure that the teacher has time to support the students' efforts, the student, that's the learner who is a talented and gifted learner, that student who's struggling, the student that you want to raise the bar from them, the student learning the English language, the student coming from a home where there needs to be strong social and emotional support. You know, these are things that are really stretching our budget to the limit. You hear me talk all the time about having been here 41 years. I've been here when times were difficult, but I've never been here when the accountability is as high as it is for these students to get their high school diploma, to go on and be accepted for career, for college, for military, for all the expectations that we have. And we cannot continue to do it on the dollars that we have. Our city has to step up, our state has to step up, our federal government, we had that conversation again tonight, and we have to make sure that we are supporting education. Again, I thought it was an excellent kickoff meeting. I'm glad that Brockton had the meeting. The mayor and I have done a little bit of some follow-up conversation earlier this week, but I will keep you updated because the ball is rolling and we're going to keep it, keep it moving at this point.
Secretary Paul Revel was really excellent in his presentation, in his historical perspective, his involvement in the prior action. And he basically, you know, said that in order to be successful, we have to have buy-in from a number of different districts, both urban and rural, large communities and small communities. Without that cross-section, which was attained in the last action years ago, he doesn't think it could be successful. But with the support of many different communities hitting upon the different issues that affect both large, small, urban, rural, that's where the courts basically can't ignore the cross-section of economic disparities. So it can't just be Brockton. Definitely that was the message. But it was an excellent, it was an excellent day. My compliments to the superintendent. She, she definitely holds her own with a bunch of, you know, fellow professionals in that room. And, you know, we're definitely fortunate here in Brockton to have an advocate for children and someone who handled that room very well, very well. So, good job, Superintendent.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I have to thank Wanda also, who put together, worked with Stonehill. Thank you to Father John Denning, to Fran Dillon, to all their staff for allowing us, and that was in kind. So they allowed us to use the room and it was a lot of hard work. Thank you, Wanda. Okay, are we all set with that?
I don't think so.
I want to move on and I want to talk to parents about the flu epidemic. And unfortunately, I'm not sure if you heard what I heard this morning, but they were saying that this is the worst that they've seen it in 10 years and there's a possibility it will go into the spring. So, you know, with that in mind, you know, last week was very difficult in the schools. We had numerous cases at all levels, including employees, our students. So we're making sure, again, that parents are certainly not sending their children to school sick. Make sure that you're checking before the child is leaving. If they're not feeling well, please be assured, because again, when you're in an environment like the school, you're talking, the germs spread, excuse me, spread very quickly. We did send a letter home and parents are wonderful in our community, always willing to help out. We asked for things such as, and we do have some of these supplies, but when you talk about, again, the extreme nature of this, we're looking for Kleenex, liquid hand soap, hand sanitizer, and most importantly, the antibacterial wipes. So if people are able to, when you're doing your shopping, if you can provide one of those items, send them in with your classroom teacher, it would be very, very helpful in helping us to wipe down desks to keep children. We continue to talk about proper washing of hands and we're certainly paying attention to all of the best practices to make sure. I know Meg Thomas and our facility department has gone in, disinfected schools, classrooms, anywhere that we're seeing a large number of flu cases. So a lot of hard work. Supervisor of nurses, Linda Cahill, it's been non-stop with our nurses and our support staff for children. And to finish up, I, we have some really wonderful things to talk about, then I'm going to have, to finish up, Michelle, show you a slideshow. So let me just call out some great things that have happened. We had a gala the other evening for our state championship soccer team. I know this seems to never end, but when I walked into Massasoia Conference Center, Mr. Gormley was there that evening, sat at the table with us. I don't know about you, but it was just absolutely beautiful. It was in red and black, decorations on the table, big soccer balls at the top of the decorations, our young men introduced one by one with slideshows, showing of the game, all in tuxedos, dancing. It was, it was a wonderful celebration. So thank you to Dr. Soraya DeBarros. I know her staff helped out at the Parent Information Center, to Manny DeBarros, who is one of our counselors at Brockton High School, to Moses Rodriguez, to Louis Lopes. I know there's a very large committee that put this together, and I certainly can't thank all of them. But it was just a wonderful evening, you know, to celebrate our young men on the soccer team. Moving on from that, we're going to show you our scholastic art awards. As we said, you heard Shama talk about Brockton High School and North Middle School with their Gold Key Awards, and we're going to show you some of their artwork. We have our Big Three champion swimming team. DECA recently had 20 students go to a competition in Mansfield with their advisor, Paula Minichello, and out of those students, there were 17 awards given in that competition, you know, really unheard of. So we have lots to always celebrate in the Brockton Public Schools and really pleased to be able to show you. So I'm going to step out of the way, have Michelle do that, and I will finish up my report for the evening.
We also had awards, top awards, first-place awards given to our Empower Yourself Economic Global Summit that took place over at UMass Boston with Cedric Turner and students from both the high school and some of our middle schools. They basically took top prizes from other districts. And some district, I think Greenwich, Connecticut, was one of the other high schools, and we beat them. And, you know, those students are certainly from a wealthy community. But it was really a first-class event. The students were so well-spoken, so well-dressed, so well-behaved, so impressive. In fact, there was a gentleman who was the head of Stanley Morgan in Boston.
Oh wow.
Yeah, and he is giving a couple of, he is on the board of the, I think it's Boston Medical. It's either Boston Medical or Mass General. And he's giving a couple of our students internship opportunities because he was so impressed. So my hat's off to our students, my hat's off to Mr. Turner, and Mr. Zimbor over at the Ashfield helps him out tremendously. The kids were great. We need to also invite those students over as well. So that's another group that we need to...
March?
Yeah, yeah. And I would love to have Mr. Turner, perhaps have a couple of the champions do their quick presentation, because they're short, they're probably about five-minute presentations, but just very impressive on all the global economic issues affecting the times right now and awesome event.
Mister Thomas and Sharon Wolder.
Yeah, we were there, we were there, yeah.
Get to the Kennedy Museum to see the performance.
And I'll tell you, UMass Boston people, I was there a long time ago taking a class. It has changed so much, so much building there. It is a beautiful, impressive campus. I mean, right there on the water. And I think they're building left and right. Dorms are being built. There's so many new buildings that never used to be there when I was a student. But what a gorgeous campus, impressive.
Beautiful location.
Yeah, yeah. Now I know why our taxes are going up. But it's gorgeous. Beautiful opportunity for kids, excellent, excellent location.
Okay, Michelle.
That was very exciting.
And this is the Stonehill College Equity and Education Discussion. I hope. This is Tom Scott, who's the head of the Mass Association for School Superintendents. This is at the Martin Institute at Stonehill College. Wanda preparing. This is Paul Revel, Kim Gibson, June Saban-Maguire, Ethan Kinsell. This is our attorney, Sarah Spatafor, and I believe the fellow from the MTA, can't think of his name, I'm sorry.
I'm Mask.
Oh, Mask, that's right. It's Tom and the mayor. There's former Superintendent Matt Malone, now a superintendent in Fall River. Yeah, but I can't think of his last name. So there were superintendents, as we said, from a number of the urban districts that are part of our urban superintendent network. Once the presentation, we had a very short time where we were able to have discussions, and we do have, you know, takeaways, as I said, talking about building the coalitions. See the groups working together. Normally, these meetings take place monthly in Marlboro. Many of you have attended. We put a lot, a lot on the agenda as far as, this is, I'm sorry, Paul Revel, the former Secretary of Education, giving us a historical perspective. But these meetings are monthly, a lot of information from DESI, a lot of the mandates, we're able to share best practices. This is Superintendent Mary Bork from Chelsea, who again was part of the Foundation Budget Review Commission, and did a wonderful job. I've actually asked her for her speech. Sarah Katignani Spatafor, talking to people what it means to file a complaint, and what the road ahead would be. And that is my report for the evening. Other than, I know we have to refer some items to Subcommittee. So the other night, we started to put together a calendar for our interest-based bargaining. And if you can remember, back when we bargained the previous contract, it was over 100 hours. So we began our training session the other evening, and one of the things it did is it bumped out, we had a curriculum meeting set for, I believe it was February 27th, it was a Tuesday evening, we had a curriculum and a finance meeting. That curriculum meeting, I just want to remind everybody, is important, because when we changed the high school at the schedule, we need to start looking at, under NIESC, which was our accreditation a couple of years ago, we need to look at, we changed some courses from half-year to full-year, and we need to be looking at credits towards graduation, et cetera. So that will happen during that curriculum meeting. So I know we will work with the school committee to change a couple of those dates, and to also look at our finance meetings going forward. Easily, we were able to do the Tuesdays, when we did not have school committee meetings as budget night. Many of those Tuesdays, we have three school committee members serving on interest-based bargaining, and we're using a lot of those Tuesday evenings. So we can talk about, we're just starting to get figures in, but we'll work with you to start to set up a schedule. And again, this is going to be very busy for many of you, and we want to be careful with the time, your time.
Going back for one second to the Stonehill meeting, the mayor basically spoke with some opening remarks, and he was very, I would say, very impressive and on point, and also was going to reach out to obviously his counterparts throughout the state. So both, you know, both, both the superintendent and the mayor, I thought, handled themselves very well, and I think really showed and portrayed the leadership that this community has had in the past, and the role that this community plans to take in the future with respect to this issue. But again, Secretary Revel was very impressive in his, in his words. But in order to be successful, definitely stress the point that we need to have many partners in this. Not only, not only partners with regard to cities and school systems, but organizations and businesses that they need to also support this initiative going forward. So that's a, that's a job that we all really need to assist with, reach out to different organizations, certainly in our community, and businesses who would support this venture going forward. Because if, businesses will support this, because they want a well-trained workforce, well-trained students, well-trained employees, who are going to be able to take on the rigors of, you know, technology and STEM, and all the other highly skilled jobs that now are necessary in order to be competitive globally. And as we all know, Massachusetts is with regard to the tech industry, biomed, et cetera, you know, the 128 belt, you know, the hospitals in Boston, et cetera. We definitely need a workforce and personnel that are at the top of their game. So there should be partners that are willing to jump on board with us, who were in the past interested, and hopefully in the future will be interested. So it was a very good day.
And that's it.
Okay. So any other items to refer to Subcommittee? Mr. Sullivan?
The Transportation Committee. A couple of people tonight are looking for a date for, they're worried about snowplowing at the schools. And they want to get the meeting in before the snow season is over.
So we are aware of that, we're going to be reaching out to Larry Rowley, which was suggested by Ms. Plant at the last meeting, I believe it was.
All right, and then when we have Mr. Rowley's availability, then Ms. Alves can pull your committee, okay, great. Anything else? Okay, item six, unfinished business, school committee calendar, oh, I'm sorry, 2018-2019 school calendar.
Supplemental calendar, it's the...
No, the actual, yeah. Okay, enclosure 14, so you would like a vote on that this evening?
Please.
Okay. Has everyone had an opportunity to take a look at the school calendar? Mr. Sullivan?
I'd like to make a motion that the supplemental school calendar for 2018-2019 be approved as written.
So it's not supplemental, right?
No, it's the academic.
It's the actual academic calendar.
Changed the supplemental to actual academic.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Any new business? Mr. Gormley? I didn't say monkey business, I said new business.
Oh.
All right.
I'll save off, hold off.
See, Mr. Kinsell appreciates my humor, because I appreciate his, so it's, it's, you know.
I just wanted to announce that the Brockton Blazers Youth Softball League for Girls is holding registration for the spring recreational season Tuesday, February 13th, from 6:30 to 7:30, and Tuesday, February 27th, at the Baker School. And also Saturday, March 10th, at Dick's Sporting Goods. Dick's will be giving away a 20% coupon for anyone who registers that day, which is great, because newer players will have to buy a glove, which isn't cheap, and a bat, maybe a helmet, everyone wants their own helmet, then you got to buy a bag to put everything into, so it can get expensive. So 20% helps. So this is for players in grades three to eight, that's for the recreational league, and then the players from grades K to two will have an opportunity to play an instructional league, which I coach one of the teams, along with Coach Fidalgo from the track team. And you'll get some great coaching from him, not so much from me. He's an All-American baseball player. And that is also available online at leelineup.com/brocktonblazers softball. And also, I just got word that the boys' basketball team won the Big Three tonight. Impressively, by about 31 points.
Excellent, excellent.
Good job, basketball team.
So Brockton's doing very well in sports.
Having a good year.
That's great, we're back to being a powerhouse, I like that. Both academically and in the sporting arena, and obviously the arts as well. Music, et cetera.
Tearing down.
Right where we need to be. Okay, anyone else? No? Okay. Any need for an executive session? I don't think so. Okay. Excellent. All right. Any other business? Seeing none? How about a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Okay, thank you for attending, we are adjourned.
Thank you, good job.
Good meeting.
You and I are getting really good at this.